It's my first time to be gentle with me. So.
Yes, sir.
Has anybody had a chance to look at the consent calendar? And are there any amendments or does anybody wish to make a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes as.
Sorry, jumped the gun. Seconded.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes by Dyer, Casasio, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to say that at the last meeting, I have reviewed them, but I. Commissioner reports.
Mayor Protem, before that, I believe you may have two items to possibly add. Oh, okay. My apologies. Yeah. That's fine. And could I have you turn your microphone facing you? Thank you. Thanks. That's better. Thank you. Yeah, my apologies.
Commissioner, go.
I have nothing tonight.
A friendly reminder that the Ways and Means meeting is this Friday at the Liberty Theater from five to seven. And the Ways and Means is an opportunity for us to speak directly to state legislators about what's important for funding. So some of you might know, we have the Safe Routes to School funding that we get for our sidewalks. We also have a couple million at stake at the state level for funding our wastewater treatment plant. So the more people that we have in the room advocating for those resources, the better. I'm going to try to be there, and I think Henry's going to be there as well. So hope to see you then.
I have nothing.
I just want to say, I agree with you. We will just get the grades that I definitely encourage everyone. If you have an opportunity, wastewater treatment is definitely going to be something that we're going to be looking for the state to help us with as well as our government. So that we continue. Public comments. Everything in my power, not going to butcher the names. First up, Mr. Wilson, John Wilson.
Good afternoon or good evening. I think there's a lot of frustration with trying to do any kind of development in the city of Warrington. There has been for years. I did my first spec home in 1992 here. It's almost impossible to do anything these days. I'm working in the county. I can't even do my own projects. I'm trying to build my house, my son's house, trying to develop commercial property. I've hired a professional planner who was employed by the city of Warrington, and he's flabbergasted. He can't even get answers from the city when he sends stuff to the city. And it's, it's just beyond control. I mean, we need to do something. It's either we clean house or we get. There's, as the professional planner told me, there's no service by the city. It's like you put in an application and they want, they give you no answers. We're taxpayers. I think we, we need a little bit more consideration when we're taxpayers and get some answers that we can work with that's reasonable. I mean, it's just, it's out of control. And I think there's a lot of builders that have just given up on working in the city. In fact, your last city manager, I went into a meeting with her and she told me, well, we don't want development in the city of Warrington. I've lived here all my life, and you're telling me I, you don't want development? I can't build my own home? That's, that to me is ridiculous. I don't know. And I will tell you. I know for a fact. If you are relatives of city commissioners or city employees, it's pretty easy to get a building permit. That's not right. I'm sorry. It's not right. So that's my two cents.
I appreciate that. You've got away. You have to say it.
If you could hand them to Don, please.
And those he can read afterwards. It gives detail to some of what I'm going to deal with. You know, there's many motives for becoming a civil servant, both elected and paid. Among them are love of the position and the title. Love of process is another one. And love of serving people. I mean, that isn't all the motives, but those are three that I would like you to think about as we're going through our journey. And, and this is a lot of this happened. It happened while we were building our new building. There's a couple in there afterwards. Tim and I moved to Young's Bay Plaza in nineteen eighty-three. We did it partially because Astoria wouldn't deal with their parking and they weren't very business friendly. And Warrington had a reputation of being more business friendly. We started building our store in 2007. One recession and seven years later, we completed it. The, we were fully permitted in 2008 for about fourteen hundred dollars. In 2012, we had to re-permit it. And that's because the recession was a parenthesis in our, our project, you know? And so anyhow, it was fourteen hundred dollars and, and the second time we went in, there was ten thousand two hundred. And I'm not naming names here because I don't think it's appropriate in a public meeting, but there are some names in, in, in there and you'll see who was involved with it. The the elevate, so we started the, the project, actually the restart, that was, this would have been 2012. When after the recession, we started rebuilding and we had to get elevation certificate. And so we hired a surveyor, filled out, he filled out the elevation certificate. And the they had a beginning elevation and an ending elevation. And the city planner comes up to us and says, well, you got to put that ending one in the beginning slot. He didn't use those words. He said, this number goes here. What's that? Okay, well. It's abuse that we received from that. And after it was done, there's a whole list that I didn't go through. After it was done, there was two other people, businesses that came up to me. I told them, I said, I'd never build another building again if, if my life depended on it. They said the same thing. If this is happening all across the country, and I think it is, and I think it's not just here. We're in trouble. I used to, to recommend Warrington for a place to start a business, to business people, small business people. Tim and I don't do that anymore.
I appreciate that. I mean, to say before we move on, it looks like there's a lobby. During the planning for this, for this next year, when we sat down and did our mission and what we wanted, one of the top priorities, we decided was to have a task force created so that we can meet with the building community and fix and have conversations about relationships between the city and the building community. So know that this is a priority. It's something that this year is specifically one of our mission statements, specifically worked for as part of one of the tasks, and a task force to be put together. And we will be addressing that. Kenneth Cole.
I represent CNS Builders. We've been building in this town for probably. Anyway, we've been building in this town for generations and right now I'm getting ready to turn my company over to my son, teaching him how to build according to the city of Warrington's. City Warrington told us, well, go buy a code book. We buy the code book. Well, that's open for interpretation. We're trying desperately, and I'm trying to teach my children, son, grandson, to do this properly through the city channels. And I, we've ceased working in Warrington because we can't seem to get a definite answer. We get into something, we bid it. The, the, well, you didn't get this. This happened last week. You have to do this. Well, it ends up costing us thousands of dollars for, you know, just the things that we didn't even know about. Or how, what the interpretation is. So I'm, I'm not real sure exactly where to go from here, other than just staying away from the city of Warrington, so this family business can survive. Thank you.
I'll first. I'll be third, though. Love and speaks. Leanne Bog.
You said it right. Yeah. My name is Leanne Bog. I've lived here for most of sixty-seven years and I love this place. I've raised some of my kids here and we like to have, you know, people over and brag about how beautiful our town is and all the area that we have and everything. I'm a recently retired, sort of recently. I apologize for my appearance. I was helping my husband and working just down the road. So, but I know we're in a room full of hardworking taxpayers, so you understand. But I'm a retired nurse and a couple of all the many things that we all do. I worked as a community nurse for a while, health nurse, and also worked as a school nurse during the pandemic. So I understand the struggles with bureaucracy and, and whatnot that can get in the way of good intentions. But I also understand that when there's an issue with the health of the community, which our small town government has a lot of importance in the health of our community, as you know. This is why my friend is sitting up there, because he cares. But what the process looks like and what we have to do is just take an assessment of what's going on and then reassess it and fix it, as you mentioned. So I'm just asking that, please do that because as apparently, that apparently the health of our community is at risk and at the expense of our citizens that love this place. And like Johnny said, and Kenny said, we're trying to do it lawfully, but it's making it very difficult. I, thank God, don't have any personal complaints, but those people that I care about that are hardworking have had struggles that I don't feel that they should, including my brother who's been homeless without water for a year for no good reason. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Trey Schaefer. I'm new to the area. I used to work for the federal government as a law enforcement officer. My comments regard to an issue later, it's going to be coming up later involving the nuisance declaration over at forty-five, just down, like two blocks down where all the junk and the cars are. So I don't want to direct that too much, but just thank the commission for considering the issue tonight. And thank Officer Salinas here because from my conversations with him and working with him, he's been really awesome to work with. I know he's new in the position. But I've been very grateful for how considerate he's been and working with us. I know it's, as you know, probably you'll have, most of you drive by, you know where it is, you've seen it. It's been a very slow progress of attempting to get the place cleaned up. There's been a lot of issues, a lot of other things that are going on, but, and I've been, you know, been here a couple of years now almost and, you know, seen a little, you know, hadn't seen a lot of progress, but with, you know, working with Officer Salinas, knowing that it's going to be coming before the commission, I has really kind of put a fire under the buns of those that were, you know, the result of, you know, causing those issues and has really actually, in my view, started to make some significant progress. Where there used to be a half dozen cars, I've seen at least, I believe, two that have vacated the premises. Another one that's going to be towed away tonight. The wind took away one of the tents and they've taken down another. I see you do have photos on your, on your, up there. I would hazard a guess that they are probably outdated. That they're a good representation, but may not be the, the current picture if you were to walk two blocks down to, to see what's actually been going on there recently. And, you know, the two tenants that could speak on their behalf tonight are down there working on trying to come into compliance with what the, the commission is looking for. I know this is kind of a, a new program for the, the city of Warrington, for the commission having a code compliance officer to, you know, try and figure out, you know, how does this process work? What's an effective strategy to address these issues? Is it fines? Is it citations? Is it lots and lots of letters and we go into mitigation or litigation in some way? Personally, I don't believe that if fines are imposed, that it's going to be an effective strategy. I think it's going to add pain to an already difficult situation for, for everyone involved. That, you know, I can, you know, if it is declared a nuisance tonight, I understand, but I'd also ask that if, you know, there is progress being made, if we can continue to, to work together cooperatively on this issue instead of as adversaries, because I don't want to be in a fight with the city of Warrington. I know that's not going to be a winning thing for either side, and I'd like to see a, a good resolution to this. I'd like to, again, thank the commission for considering the issue and Officer Salinas for being awesome to work with. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to? Has anybody had a chance to fill out the show cards? Is everybody online? So we'll move on to business items. We have two items that we need to add. The first is a letter or hardship to add if we're agreed to be tried of all signatures. Today is March twenty-first. And the question is, do I have a motion to add this to the business items? We would make it number G.
H?
Seven G. Or I'm sorry, seven H.
H.
It's on the backside. It's on the backside. The Seafarers Park and Stabilization is seven G. So this would be seven H. Sorry, Mayor Protem. It would be seven H. Seven G is the Seafarers Park Stabilization.
I think that's fine. No question.
No problems.
The second one was a request for the salvage chief. This is a request that has come up several times in the past, and it was a question of whether the commission wanted to discuss this and whether you wanted that on the agenda tonight.
Everybody had a chance to look at that and add that as well.
That would be seven I.
Aye.
They're ranging the nuisance citation, two four seven Tai E Street.
Evening. For those attending, I'm, my name is Christian Salinas. I'm the code compliance officer for the city of Warrington. Sure. All righty. So on January twenty-eighth, the commission declared that the property of two forty-seven Tai E a nuisance. And on the twenty-ninth, I sent Ms. Medjo a letter of judgment by certified mail. A copy was also hand delivered. The letter advised of the declaration and of the thirty-day timeline granted by the commission to abate the violation. I conducted a site visit numerous prior to, but an official site visit on February twenty-seventh, the conditions of the violations remained unchanged and photographs were taken. So this is, this is when I first took on the case, these were photographs that I showed you. You'll see the view that we're looking at right here. There's only one RV or one camper looking directly ahead. You can move on to the next picture. That's the other side of the yard where there are two campers. That one that says, I believe it says wilderness, ultimately gets moved to the south side of the yard, which you'll see in later photo, in, in a later photograph. And you can, you can change. So on the twenty, on, and, and again, this is the seventh, you can go ahead and change the next picture. So as you can see there on, on twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, I went out and took pictures. The the camper was moved to the south side and it was replaced with that cargo container. All that still exists. On March fourth, I sent Ms. Medjo a notice of hearing. One was sent by certified mail and another was hand delivered. Since March, since March fourth, the dismantling of two of the campers have begun. One of the two has been dismantled to its flatbed frame. You want to change? So it, it may be a bit difficult to see, but what you're seeing is direct, a direct view. The camper's been dismantled. It's just basically a flatbed frame. Though the progress has been, has been observed. It didn't begin until the, until the deadline had passed. And all of the debris from the camper is in piles all throughout the front of the yard. So I report that no significant improvement has been made and the violation still exists. And if you want to change. So you see, you get a better view of that, of that camper that's been dismantled. And then the next photograph should show the camper on the, and it's, it's a bit difficult, but in the photographs that you guys have, it might see a little bit better, but that camper right there, they're starting to take parts of it, part of the siding off, but they're not taking it away from the property. It's just becoming a greater mess. It's uncontained. So that's what I have.
Ed contacted her to see if any assistance could be done. And she stated that the wrecking yard wouldn't take the trailers except for the flatbed minus the floor on. So that's probably what she's trying to do. I don't know if she's made any attempt to do the aluminum or siding, but I think she was trying to remove this, well, put, get enough aside so she can make a trip to do it, but she's obviously not made, because it's no prob, it's almost worse.
It looks worse.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I, I, you could see that they're doing something, but unfortunately it's, it's, now you have debris everywhere.
Yeah, I drove by a property, like I see it itself. And I really, it really looks worse than it did before. Pictures that's there. I saw where they had taken a bad ones of trailers and the flatbed. But basically it doesn't look like it's still going.
The camper that, where they dismantled the one to the flatbed, the camper that's in front of that hasn't been touched at all. It's still, but I, I get it. You can only do so much at a time, but it's, so, so the thirty days was granted and then by the time we had this commission meeting, it was approximately additional thirty days on top of that.
And I apologize commissioners, but if you could speak a little bit more into your mics, we are recording this and sometimes it's hard to hear you through the microphones. So please speak a little closer, Commissioner Dyer and Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Okay.
So Mayor Protem, if you remember from your last meeting regarding this, the discussion was around allowing some time for remediation. But as was communicated to the property owner, if there was not progress and significant change made, you probably would proceed with citation and a court date. So you have the option, you know, the maximum fine is a thousand dollars. In the past, we have not done that per day unless we felt that was the incentive needed. You could say it is a thousand dollar citation, which will be issued by your code compliance officer with a court date set. Now keep in mind, when they go to the municipal judge, sometimes they don't do that full amount. Sometimes there's time given for, for more opportunity for remediation. That is up to the judge. You do not set that, but at this point you can say what you would like the next course of action to be.
We gave thirty days with no fines. It's been sixty. Nothing's happened. I say that myself, I believe we should cite and let it go to the judge.
I just have some questions around how this will play out. So if she is fined, there will be a lien against her property.
It is not a lien at this point. It is a citation. So it's basically like a ticket is issued to you with a court date set. So then she has the opportunity to go to court, present her case to the judge and our, you know, staff will present as well. The past experience with a nuisance that was brought to court, the judge, you know, discussed it with the property owner, actually gave an opportunity for remediation and then a further court date was set. And then if remediation did not occur during that time, then a leverage of the fines and, and such. There was, there was some fine set at the initial court date and then a kind of, if you clean this up, then this will be reduced, but if you don't, it will be the further fine.
Okay.
And that is, again, that is not something set by the commission. That is the discretion of the judge.
I just asked because my assumption here is if this individual doesn't have enough money to get her property cleaned up right now, how will she then pay for fines? It just seems like a negative cycle if we don't have any other resources to give her.
She was speeding. It got hot like, her speeding and got a ticket. Same basic thing. Couldn't afford to speed. I mean, couldn't afford to pay the ticket. She was speeding. She knew, I mean, she's been given, I don't know how long, you know, to settle this. She knows she has an issue.
And Commissioner Mitchell, I will say she will have her opportunity to plead a hardship to the judge.
Okay.
I have heard that discussion in court before.
Because I certainly want to have it cleaned up. It's just, I don't want someone to lose their home as a result of this.
Yeah.
I have a question.
This would not be a lien on the property at this time. They usually set up a payment plan. Yes.
I have a question. You know, we get those, I don't know, six hundred pounds. Each citizen gets one of those that take to the dump. Could we create a program where people could donate those so we could use those to clean up properties?
Yeah, in the past, what we have done is the, a previous city planner actually did a cleanup day for a hardship. But to donate your dump would be hard because we have an agreement with Recology that it is just one per per household and we. Per household and we actually reimburse those. So it'd be hard to track it if suddenly somebody's showing up with multiple, it would have to actually be an arrangement with the city and recology. Versus individuals doing that type of thing.
Possibly look into that for the futures, because I would donate mine and I'm sure that a lot of people would donate theirs. And then we'd have the. The group amount and then we're doing something for the people and it still costs us, but the place gets cleaned up.
I would have to review whether that's a possibility, yeah. It's kind of out of the box, I don't think that's ever been brought up before. So I'd have to kind of think through the ins and outs of that and discuss it probably with recology as well, so. And, and the question would be, you know, well, if you do it for one, then you'd probably have to do it for all. And so that would be hard if people donate to one cleanup, but not the other. And, and you only get one a year, so how does that work then if everybody, the first nuisance gets it?
Saying is people would donate it to the city.
Okay.
Okay, and then you have a group of them, we decide if we want to help clean it using those. I mean, the, the purpose is we want to get it cleaned up and this is a gal living on no money. The chances of her paying for it is probably zero. I, I would be nice if, if it just.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that Commissioner Dyer, I think the only thing would. If we per se use all of them on the first one and then the next person comes, then it's a little unfair to the next person, but I appreciate, you know, if, if, if it was something that could. I'd have to think that through a little further.
Okay, thank you.
Oh.
Think she needs to, I think she needs to be fined because we got to be consistent, then we could deal with the fine. You know, it's tough to squeeze blood out of a turner.
Yeah, I mean. I think that in this case, a fine is warranted. I think that most certainly you can't make it so large that it could possibly. But I think it needs to be enough where. Urgency becomes a problem. So if you assess a hundred dollars a day, you know, that's still a lot of money. And over the, you know, so over the course of thirty days, you know. Again, it's going to go before a judge and the judge then will make a decision on, you know, how much of that is actually going to be done, but.
And the judge will.
The judge.
Yeah, he can go down, he's probably going to go down, my experience. But I think we need to find her because it's just the process. We can find a way to assist her. Later on, that's fine.
Do I have a motion?
I move that Warrington City Commission declare that a citation not to exceed one thousand is warranted in accordance with municipal code eight dot one six dot two two zero dot. The amounts in this suggested motion here from staff.
And, and the judge will adjust it. I think that's. The judge can adjust it down to zero if you want.
So you have a motion before you for it to not to exceed a thousand dollars?
I'll second.
Hi. Dyer, all takers say.
Aye.
Aye. Seven P.
Next one is, this is complaining for property four. Probably at forty five southwest fourth street.
Pardon me. Alright, the property at forty five southwest fourth street violates the city of Warrington's nuisance municipal code section eight point one six point one two zero junk. This violation was initially reported on the fourteenth of January. The owner of the property, Karen Cochran, was notified and requested by the city to abate the violation. Ms. Cochran owns this four unit rental and lives offsite. William and Melissa Spivey, her daughter and son-in-law occupy one of the units. Ms. Cochran has informed me that they are the responsible party for the nuisance. And she's having a difficult time getting them to remove the items. Today, the conditions continue to, pardon me, today, the conditions continue to exist. Items causing the violations include, but are not limited to, three makeshift sheds constructed with tarps and bungee cords. Surrounded by numerous inoperable vehicles in deteriorating conditions. Other items include automotive parts, tools, containers. Gallon jugs, five gallon oil cans and fifty-five gallon drums containing unknown fluids, scrap wood, metal, propane tanks, appliances and various other items. Today I conducted a site visit of Ms. Cochran's property. Photographs which you'll see in a moment are provided. I did not observe any evidence of actions that would indicate compliance. I respectfully request. The city commission to declare this property a nuisance. So if you go to, so this is on January when I first. Took, took charge of, of, of this case, you can go to the next picture. So this is, this is the property, this is in the front yard, this is viewable from fourth and south main court. This is a view from fourth, the other was a view from south main court, switch to the next picture. So earlier this month, this is from fourth. I have seen two vehicles get towed away, in fact, I watched one get towed away, but I know two are no longer there. But this is a view from fourteenth, from fourth, go ahead and switch to the next picture. And so then this is from today, this morning I took photographs, so this is from. From main court. And if you switch. This is from fourteenth, a distance, and then you'll see where I zoom in on this next one. And in this, in this photograph, it's, it's everything that I had talked about, there's fifty-five gallon drums, gallon containers, five gallon oil, oil cans. Wood, you got three different tarped. Makeshift tents. There are vehicles on the backside, you can't even see everything that really is in the yard because of these three constructed tents, but there's, and there's a lot of debris all around it. So.
Is the dumpster part of the multifamily complex or was it brought on site to help with removal of junk?
I don't have that.
It, so it's always there?
And Ms. Cochran is the property owner, but we'll wait and give you a, a chance in just a minute, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. Yes, sir. So that's why I said unknown fluids. I'm, I'm hoping not, so, so what I do know is some of the one gallon had orange fluid. And I can only tell that from a distance, they weren't completely full, so I could tell that it was, there was a discoloration, the normal jug color and then the, the orange. The, the five gallon oil cans, that's what they appear to be in the fifty-five gallon drums, I have not walked onto the property. There was one day that I got out of my vehicle and a male subject that was in the area. Was not so pleased with my, with my presence and made it known and I decided to leave. And since then I chose not to walk onto the property, I felt that it would be a violation of their, of their privacy. Yes.
So is this, are they in the end or unit?
I, I don't know what unit they're staying in.
You could ask the property owner, she is here, if you want to bring her up to ask questions.
Thank you.
Hi. What's that? I'm Karen Cochran, my personal residence is eight nine eight three eight highway one oh one. Warrington. You had questions? The dumpster is for all four units.
And which unit do the people causing the mess live in?
If you look at the photograph, it's the unit on the left.
So is it the far end one?
Yes.
Okay.
Which isn't actually that, you, there's two separate addresses for the two buildings. I knew what you were talking about though, when I got the letter, so it wasn't a big deal. My husband died of brain cancer about three years ago, he was, he managed the units. I didn't have anything to do with it and after he died, for about a year, I was pretty much not coping with anything. By the time that year had passed, I had. I had two units that had, the police were being called, I don't know, once, twice, three times a month. I would never really found out why. I hired an attorney, I mean, the place was like. So out of control. And I decided that I needed to address the. The potential for violence and aggressive combative behaviors. And destructive behaviors, one of the units, they, the one on the right. They totally trashed the entire inside of the unit and I had to basically gut the whole thing. I still was not in a state where I could deal with. Multiple things at once. I had one tenant that needed to come out and you had another tenant that needed to come out and I needed to clean up. And I decided that the other two issues were. I mean, it was uns, it's unsightful, if that's a word, but I needed to deal with those other issues first. So I hired an attorney and it took a few months and a few thousand dollars to get rid of the one unit, the tenants in one unit. And then I went to the other unit and I addressed that tenant and finally got him removed. Which was about April of last year, it took me that long to get. Those units empty. In the meantime, I was talking to my daughter and son-in-law and telling them, you have to clean up. If, I actually tried to sell the place, I couldn't sell the place without giving it away because of the mess. And I decided, okay, I'm just gonna have to clean it up in order to even sell it or hire a property management company, so. Nothing had changed, I was still ha, gonna have to deal with it. They had a storage unit, one or two, and I'm not sure, in the, the one. The facility that the city of Warrington took over last summer. And they had been in the process of cleaning stuff out and moving it into those storage units. And then they, they basically. Got into a dispute with the city of Warrington and they didn't want to keep the units. So everything that was in the units came back on my property last summer. And I had intended to start painting and doing some of the repairs and trim and. I have the paint already, I plan to. You know, fix up the parking area and put down gravel and I have a sign for handicap parking already and. You know, I have these plans. And then all of a sudden, I couldn't get, I mean, it wasn't, it was worse by last fall. And I was only able to get one of the buildings, get some paint on it to get it through the winter. It's not done, I haven't done the trim and stuff, but at least it got a coat of paint. So I told them you have till March. When the weather gets better, somewhere around March or April. And then I want to get in and I'm, I'm gonna paint. And. They were. Like. Total, I mean, my daughter totally understands. And it was, took her a while, I think, to really communicate with my son-in-law, what, what really needed to happen. I don't know, I, I don't know what their personal dynamics are really, but um. Then we got, who's contacted by Mr. Salinas. And I started telling them. Okay, we're to the point where the city is going to give me a citation if you don't do this. And right about that time, they had gotten a line on a shop space. Kind of big facility that they could move everything into, including the vehicles. But they hadn't actually signed the papers yet to rent it. And so I helped them do that, I gave them the first and last month's rent so they could get going on it. We hired a Utah, U-Haul, they've taken out actually truckloads of stuff. There were a total of seven inoperable vehicles, we have removed four of them. Number five, they were working on tonight, when my daughter got home from work. Number six should be pretty easy to move. Which would leave just one, the one is. Under that prominent awning. The one on the, the awning on the right came down tonight. It came down about five thirty, right before I came over here. So that they can get to the vehicles behind it. The, the cleanup is happening. I don't know that I can make them move any faster than they already are. I have. There's a lot of, there's a lot of dynamics at play, but it is happening, it is a goal. I have told them that everything outside of the buildings on the property anywhere. If it can't go in the house, it's gone, it has to be gone. Any, all the awnings, all the junk, all the pallets, the pallets were to keep things up off the ground. And if, I don't know if any of those picture, pictures show a whole stack of pallets off to the left. Those pallets have all been emptied of the stuff that was on them. So that's how much work they have actually already done. I am in a total agreement with the city of Warrington that it need, that it's a nuisance, it needs to be cleaned up. I, I don't have any resentment for the city. I've.
Do you think if we gave you thirty days, you could finish it up?
If they don't, there's something more wrong than there has been. Because at this point, they have somewhere to move it to. Which has been a holdup for a really long time. That would be what I would ask the city for is, is time. But I'm also aware that there's only so much time you can give. Before you have to take measures of your own, and I understand that.
They're not willing to help, do you have other resources in that, if we gave you thirty days to get this completed, I don't know why?
Resources like what? I do, I, I have people who would be willing to help clean it up. It causes a tremendous amount of anxiety for my son-in-law to have somebody else.
Yeah.
Handling his things.
I can understand that, do, do, it sounds like they're making progress, do you think?
I believe they are.
They can get it done in thirty days?
I don't know that, but I believe it will get done, I just don't know if they can do it in thirty, I mean, they've, they've.
I mean, even if.
Fire was lit.
Even if they made significant progress, that would.
I, I believe that it would be significant, yes.
Have you done inspection on the two units that are occupied, are they doing okay inside? Is it, they're not tearing things up at all?
Well, the one that my daughter and son-in. Well, the one that my daughter and son-in-law live in was really fixed up very nicely before right when they moved in. My husband had done a lot of things, new cabinets and new bathtub and things like that. And my daughter is helped with it. I I doubt if there's actual damage. I I would be really surprised. The other renter who is still in one of the units has been there for many years. And he and my husband had agreements for lawn maintenance and stuff in lieu of some rent, and they had and that's still in I think his interior is old, older than it should be, like 15 years out of date. But I mean, there's there's things that happened in those 15 years, like a new hot water heater.
It's kind of limited to the outside.
At this point in time, it's the outside. I I the other two units that I got emptied were the ones with the real destruction and the real public behavior issues. And then this was my third issue to deal with was the mess. And then I'm gonna go in and fix it up and turn it over to a property management company.
I have a question for our code enforcement officer. If she is. Are you seeing, from what she's saying, a pretty good push to clean it out?
It's tough. There's a lot. There's a lot that's there. So I I
There's so much, and they move it as they're working.
Okay.
Because I just I see things in the I've seen vehicles move. I've seen vehicles moved, but I I don't feel comfortable enough to tell you that I see significant change in in the in the time that I've had this case.
And I understand.
Yeah.
Whatever whatever you decide. I'm at this point, I'm I've done what I can. I am doing what I can. It will I will continue no matter what the city decides. So, okay.
So if what's happening that she says is happening, would you be opposed to waiting to make it a nuisance or do it a nuisance and give them 30 days? From your perspective?
I can appreciate her request.
Yeah.
And 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 she has been. We've had long talks.
Yeah.
And and I and I can understand the struggles that she's dealing with. And I would be inclined to give her the time. Yeah, she is. I guess that we've we've had conversations on the phone that have lasted about an hour at a time. And so I I I would be for it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we could we could deem it a nuisance today. We don't have to. We can give I believe we can give the 30 days. In 30 days, if it's not significantly affected. She helped them get a place to put stuff. If you, you know, tells them, you gotta do this or else. We can always deem it the nuisance in 30 days. We don't have to go 60. She doesn't have to come back in. The compliance officer can tell us whether there's significant impact or not to being after next. And if it isn't at that time, we can deem it a nuisance. And I say we give 30 days lenience to fix it up.
Yeah, that works for me.
I would agree with that.
I have a tendency to agree as well. I think we declare it a nuisance with a 30 30 day stay or any kind of penalty. And then basically 30 days weekend. And then 30 days we won't see it.
So you'd like to declare?
Yeah. Or nuisance with the with the caveat that we we don't put a fine forward until we hear again in 30 days. Find out at that time whether or not they comply as moved to significance.
What would be significant?
Nearly cleaned up.
Yeah.
Because I'm gonna be asked.
If not cleaned up.
Yeah.
Because it seems like they have a place that's big enough to put all the stuff.
Yes.
And 30 days is a long time to be able to move that amount of stuff. I've moved a lot of stuff, and it easily will be done in 30 days.
Recology also has 10 cubic yard, 20 cubic yard, and 30 cubic yard rental options that will be on par with the fine if there was a fine. So you can move forward with getting a dumpster on site to help. Yeah.
I I move that Warrenton City Commission declare a public nuisance exists at 45 Southwest Fourth Street, Warrenton, Oregon, and direct staff to move forward with appropriate abatement procedures or citations as outlined in municipal code, but I move also that we wait 30 days for any sort of citations or fines.
Second.
Aye.
And Mayor Protem, I appreciate that Poe stated about the 30 day because that is a variation from your city code. It does say abatement within 10 days. So thank you for clarifying that for the record. So, all right. So Mayor Protem, and next up on your agenda is the ordinance 1286 rezone and site design review. I am presenting on behalf of our interim city planner. This is the second reading and possible adoption. So this is what is referred to as the Lums Village rezone consideration. So Helix O Construction Company, on behalf of L U N E Properties LLC, applied to rezone a portion of the property from R10 intermediate density residential to RH high density residential and has applied for a site design review to construct a new multifamily housing unit that they are considering for staff housing. And as you remember, there were three conditions of approval, including a traffic study. And so this is before you for a second reading and followed by a possible motion for adoption. So a motion for a first or a second reading by title only, and then a second motion for adoption.
I think there's an error in the
It's a second reading.
Yeah.
You you have done your first reading already, so it is a second reading.
It'll be second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to to move to the first read by
Second.
by Salasio Dyer.
Aye.
I think we need to correct it the second.
Yes.
I thought you moved second.
So my apologies, you have done a first reading, so this is a second reading by title only is the correct. Yeah, sorry, there is a typo. Yeah.
So motion is to move to conduct a second reading by title only. Ordinance number 12. And according to living conditions and site designs, the application SDR that 24 dash two and rezone application Ozzy dash 24 dash two and amending the city of Warrenton zoning map to reclassify the zoning portion of real property identifying as tax line 810288D03400 from I dash 10 intermediate density residential to R dash 5 high density residential. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1286.
Seconded.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1286.
Seconded.
Oh, Losio to adopt ordinance number 1286, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, so Mayor Protem, I was just making sure you were at the right spot. You have before you water ordinance 1292. This is requesting a second reading and adoption of ordinance 1292. So if you remember, these were two sections that were reviewed and then under discussion, move forward for a first reading at your last meeting. So this is regarding some changes, including a pay deadline changed to 11:59 instead of 5:00 p.m. For those who pay online, some new procedures in case of property owners becoming deceased. And in the case of the city deciding not to remove a water meter or line in in extreme circumstances, no longer billing the user due to that city determination. So just a reminder, we will bring the act the full water ordinance for further discussion probably in July of this year. So this is just an update. Yeah.
In those cases where someone asked or said removing the water meter, we have to dig up through the
Yes.
payment, we will leave it there and stop charging them.
We will. So we we considered kind of the more extreme cases we've had recently in the last several years in the city. Yes. So you have for you a potential motion to conduct second reading by title only.
I move to conduct the second reading by title only of ordinance number 1292.
Second.
By all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I move to adopt ordinance number
Point of order, Mr. Poe. Mayor Protem, I need you to read the the title only of that ordinance, please.
Please read it into the record.
Yeah.
I think it's in there.
And that was just just the title. Yes.
I will make him read the whole thing.
Providing for rules and regulations by city of Warrenton Water Department in all areas served by the municipal water department outside Warrenton city limits regarding installation of water meters, repelling any other water emergencies or resolutions of products that are in conflict here with them, providing a penalty for violation of any terms and conditions here.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1292.
A second.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 My apologies, this would be the water line replacement project, RP2. And that would be a 7E.
7E.
7B?
E.
B.
I'll just my first time.
And you have Public Works Director Kevin Gorman here to present that.
Consideration for water water line replacement project, RP2.
Yes.
This is my time to start, huh?
Yes.
Well, good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Pleasure to meet you, Mayor Protem Mitchell. All right, I'm Kevin Gorman. I'm the new public's worked public works director, if I could say it right. Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I'm loving it so far. And I'm here today to request approval to advertise for bids on the phase two of this project currently budgeted for $2.74 million. And this is the raw water line replacement project. It's a critical replacement of 3,800 linear feet of 24 inch high density polyethylene pipe. So this is a a very critical project. It's actively leaking. I was actually I did my tour up there recently for the first time and saw this leak happening. And it's in a really critical area of our watershed up there. That I believe you guys probably know a lot more about it than I do, since I've only been here a month. So this is phase two. But it has a long history of leaks, and this is the single transmission pipeline that's connecting our water source, the rivers to our treatment plant. So a highly critical project, and we would like approval to advertise.
No, I agree with you.
I I looked over the bed, and it was a little overwhelming, but if staff says we need it, I'm I'm for it.
And and just so you know, Mayor Protem and commissioners, this is we are have been tackling this in phases, the raw water line. You'll see this come up in your CIP regularly, year after year as we're literally literally replacing it foot by foot. And again, as our Public Works Director said, it is actively leaking, so we desperately need to replace it. So and it is critical for the water supply for our city.
It's been a pleasure. Yep.
I move to approve the request to advertise for bids for phase two of the raw water line replacement project.
Seconded.
Salasio, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thank you very much, and welcome again to town.
I appreciate it.
And Mayor Protem, I will have him stay up for your next item on the agenda, which is the consideration of the vector truck purchase, item 7F.
Yes, so this request before you is to purchase a vector truck for Public Works. It's a very essential piece of equipment for Public Works safety and efficiency. It's essentially, if you haven't seen a vector truck, it's essentially an industrial mobile vacuum. So it replaced shovels years ago, and it does a lot of heavy lift heavy lifting for us. The current vehicle that we have was purchased in 2010. It's a 2009 model year. And it was pulled out of service many times. Staff even did some research on lemon law lemon law laws. And it's been out of service for the last more than a month. It just got back the other day after being repaired, and not all the features are even functional on it. So it's it's kind of a ticking time bomb, in my opinion. And in the meantime, we've been contracting out for a vector truck to come in and just to get them on sites, usually like $1,000 and then $350 per hour. So it's a pretty expensive cost. It's a little complicated, and I don't understand it all. But now is a good time to purchase this since the DEQ has adopted an administrative order. And this rulemaking is adopting California Air Resources Board amendments to heavy duty engines and vehicle exhaust emission standards. What's that? Yes. And so the way I understand it, and like I said, I haven't read all the the rules. But from the dealers that we've been talking to, trying to get one of these factor trucks has been a challenge. So the one we're proposing to to purchase is actually a demo model that they have. It's got like 100 hours on it. We're saving about $50,000 by doing that. But the way I understand the the impact to the city for this new law is that for every five diesel trucks that they sell, they're gonna have to sell one electric truck as well. So there's not a lot of demand, I don't think, for the electric trucks right now because we don't have the infrastructure. So if we buy this now, it would be a a good a good thing for our timing on that.
No.
No, no, this is a diesel vehicle. So that's all I had to present for you tonight, I believe, and open for any questions or comments.
Yeah. I want to go behind along the way, but I wouldn't say it's cost, but I also thought city manager or being creative finding lines in which to fund it because this was really not a fund maybe that planned on for this this quarter.
Unfortunately, these emergencies come up from time to time. I do have one thing to note in your memo for the water fund. It is not 025, it is 029, which I believe our our mayor Protem has. That's just a difference of where it's coming from, and and it was the wrong line that was listed. A question was raised about, is this coming out of our, you know, budget for next year? Well, the answer is if it doesn't come out of this year, it will be out of next year's what budget. So we have to we have to buy it either way. I do strongly urge you to consider it this year because otherwise we'll continue have to contract out and also might have to put in a work order for it, which could take up to 12 months. And so it is, in my opinion, time well spent and well paid out of this budget year and now versus later on.
Yeah, I believe it's around $50,000.
Yeah.
What kind of history does this company have with these machines? Do we know?
The I I can't remember off the top of my head. The, I can't remember off the top of my head the model that it is, but I remember it's, it's one that I've used in Seattle and in many other cities, so it's a very popular model.
Do you have any other questions for Gorman? Right, thank you. I have a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of the Vector Truck as out.
Second.
Dyer, Poe, all the fairness AI.
Hi.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Mayor Protem, he has one last item on your agenda, you're not done with him yet, and that is Item 7G, I believe, creation of your Seafarers Park Bank Stabilization Contract Award.
And so Public Works is pretty busy. This is a request to award a professional services contract to North Coast Civil Design in the amount of $95,800. This will address a significant erosion at Seafarers Park. Staff reached out directly with many firms, but only one proposal was received for these professional services, and it was much higher than estimated. Considered going out for proposals again to see if we could get a better deal, but there's no guarantee of a lower price, especially when we've only gotten one, one bid on it. Also, if we push this out any farther, we're going to miss the fish window, which is, I believe, November through February approximately. So, correct?
They call it the work-in-water-ish window, yes, yeah.
And so if we do miss that, we're gonna push it out another year, we'll likely see higher prices in construction for that, and then the state of the, the park itself is in pretty dire condition, so.
Well, I, for one, worry about the complete dis- irrigation of that property as we continue, if we don't do something for it, it is just, it needs to be done, and the window is very tiny, we had an opportunity to put something in there, if not, like, so it's gonna take some, it's probably another year, and there, when I hear, you gotta hide down that movie.
They are contemplating doing the work-in-water down to one month at the legislative level, so that is very concerning, yes.
Does this fit with the timeline of getting the work completed this?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
I move to award Engineering Professional Services Contract to North Coast Civil Design LLC for $95,800.
Second.
Thank you very much.
So you have an Item 7H, Mayor Protem, and I will present the memo if you would like. Yeah, so you, I, I was presented by Mr. Robin Bergerson, a request for a hardship consideration for his sidewalk in lieu of payment in the amount of $9,720. Given that the request was outside of current city code and would set a new precedent, I did recommend he make that request directly to the Commission for Consideration regarding a hardship request, and he is in the audience if you would like to have him speak.
Yes. Can you bring it up on your computer? Anyway, I'd kinda like to see the property that I have, where you can understand part of my complaint, but anyway, I'm Robin Bergerson, I lived here 69 years in Warrenton, I love this town, I've represented this town with Tommy, we've played in sports together and done things together, I love this town, and we have clam, we got everything good here, okay? But the, the problem is, the problem is, things have changed, and it's hard for me to accept the changes. So some of the changes, to me, don't seem fair or right. I heard Johnny Wilson, and I know so many people, we need to somehow, and it sounds like you guys are already going to start working at this to make the process better. So part of my hardship complaint is due to the, before construction meeting, the before construction meeting, I paid, gladly paid 150 bucks, I found a piece of residential property on the edge of Taggs Property out in Warrenton, I, I loved the property, it had a lot of difficulties about it, but, so anyway, I figure I'll pay that $150 and find out what it's gonna cost me to do this. I built a lot, I built five homes that are standing here in Warrenton for myself, not counting the other homes that I built in the area. So my first home was in 1977, and that house is still standing strong. But what I'm trying to get at is, in this meeting, they did not bring up, they brought up some things, but they didn't bring up costs, fees, they didn't bring up this sidewalk in lieu of fee, and give me a number. It's about the sidewalk, it's about the whole, it's, it's about the whole thing, but I, now here towards the end, I mean, it's went way over budget due to lack of letting me know all the engineering that I had to do, for one, and then, not only that, but you, we're double engineering. When I came to the meeting, I says, hey, you guys have done this so many times, why don't you, I, tell me what to do, and I'll do it, okay? But, and then they never said, no, you're gonna get an engineer, that's just the way it is, they should have said that to me, and they didn't say it, so I thought, well, maybe we can, you know, work it out, because even Twila's got engineering behind her name. So I figured, heck, my plumber, who has done it many times, he's hooked up these sewers, and so I figure it's no big problem. So anyway, what my complaint is, I did not know how much money it was gonna cost me to do all these, these extra things, it was not listed, they need to start listing, and they need to say, okay, you're gonna have to get an engineer for this, and this is approximately what it's gonna cost you. So that upfront, in the meantime, my house sells in four days, and now I can't even go back when I start finding these things out later, all the fees, and it's been thousands, it's been thousands of dollars extra, okay? This particular hardship, based upon, I'm out of money, that's what it's based on. Because of the meeting, they did not share the, the fees, they did not say how much the sidewalk, they didn't give me a formula, and if we could bring up the property, this is a, this is part of Aldercrick, you, there could never be a street there in a million years, nobody would allow it, it's all wetlands, it's a main drainage, that whole basin there, if you could see it on the picture, is all those fields, everything drains right out through, where they've got the city marked off that I'm gonna pay for, and then to top it off, they not only mark off where the 80-foot street is, but then the, it's an 80-foot street in the middle of water, okay? And then the end of the street, they're also counting that, so there's like 200 feet times your formula, which they didn't even give me the formula at the meeting, they should have gave me the formula so we could do some sort of a calculation. It wasn't until they shut my job down, because I ran the pipes into city right away, and they shut my job down a month and a half later, that I found this out, well, then, by then it's too late, I've already sold my house, somebody else is living in it. And so I wouldn't, I'm telling you the truth, and I would have never even done this if I would have known everything, and they've got to do better, and I'm thankful that you guys are gonna do better in these meetings, so that people know what they're up against. I have both feet into this thing, the equity of all my home that I built is, hey, I should be able to do this, you know, I should be able to build this house and come out, and, and I, and I'm not, and. This definitely something that we want to, to focus on as we get this task first moving. Yes. This particular issue, about your hardship, about the $9,000, that's what we need to start focusing on. That, that's fine, but also, please consider, no, it is hard, because I'm out of money, okay? So it is hard, it's a hardship. I barely am gonna get this house finished on borrowed money, I spent $450,000 of my own money in this project, and I'm 69, you gotta figure, this is my last, you know, I, I haven't got that many years left, and so I'm gonna try to, you know, get into this house, where I, I'm, you know, on social security, and so this kind of thing makes it really difficult for me to justify, and if they would have laid it out in the meeting, I could have backed out, stayed in my house, is what I should have did. It's my mistake, but it's your guys' mistake for not laying out all these fees, all the extra engineering, because things have changed through the years, engineer the soil, engineer the sewer, I mean, have to put a sprinkler system in, and an FDC, I mean, it's like all these different things that I've never even known was gonna happen, should have been laid out in the 100, it was only $150, figures money well-spent for the meeting, but then it wasn't given to me proper. So anyway, the other thing is, I figure while I got the ditch dug up, there's another piece of property there, zoned residential, I'll put some lines in there for a second house. Well, now I can't even recoup, I spent $9,000 extra on piping and stuff for that second lot that's out there, because it said on the sheet, I could have up to three homes on this property, on this private road, so I don't have to, any more than three homes, I have to do the sidewalks, curbs, I can't, that makes it unaffordable, okay? So I thought, well, just, I can get by the rock road. So anyway, I could, I'll just put the other pipes in, we can get this other lot over here sold, and now there's, now they're saying, oh, we never said you could do that, and it's, it's just this ongoing thing, I'm just, I'm very unhappy, even though I love this town, I just, it's not, it hasn't been easy, and to me, if you, if we could bring up the map, you'd see that that's total wetlands, I don't understand the sidewalk in lieu of thing. In fact, I said, well, hey, if I have to do this, why don't you let me, I can pour some, I poured a lot of cement in my day, let me pour some sidewalks on this property, and they won't, they won't address that to me, they just keep saying, no, you don't need sidewalks, you can't have it. Why can't I put a sidewalk along that private drive? And that's what it's for, at least that way it goes into my own property, and I can get the labor for free, save me some money to get back at all this, this happened to me. The problem right now is, is it's the hardship of what has to be done specifically for the sidewalks. Well, it's the last straw, it's not like. That's what we got. Yes, fine. That's what we opened this up, let you come in and speak today about, specifically about the hardship, and I understand, but it's bleeding into, but we've gotta focus on that, because we can't fix any of the other things tonight. So let's talk specifically about what you would like to see the city do for this hardship, so that you, because you're gonna have, you know, to pay it, and how, and how you suggest it's paid, and then let us decide what about that can happen. Okay, two things, will you consider that that's wetlands, and that street could never, ever, ever be installed? Will you consider that as one item? The second item is, if I do have to pay, if you guys do say, well, it's, it is what it is, this is how we're generating money, I would have been happier if upfront they said, hey, we're trying to repair sidewalks in the city, so this is, you know, made it clear to me, and have a flat fee, don't surprise people with big numbers like this, to me, that's a big number, I can do a lot of things with basically $9,720, I can get a lot done on my house right here at the end where I'm out of money. So anyway, the other consideration, I think that you need to realize is that, right here at the end, I could, I actually would pace whatever, if you guys had reduced the amount, I, why won't you be like a little bit flexible, and let me get my final loan, so then I would pay you. Instead, you're asking for it when I'm out of money, trying to get occupancy, I, this last 10,000 bucks, I won't even get occupancy on the house, you know what I'm saying? And now, and so I'm, now I'm stuck, and part of my being stuck is, is because of the meeting.
Got a question. If, is this money holding up you getting your final approval on your loan?
Well, it's gonna make it where I can't finish the house, and I won't get occupancy, because I've, I've been using private money right now, and I'm out, it's barely gonna get done.
And what you're saying is, hey, if you get it and get your loan, you pay.
I can pay it, I, I think it's a bit exuberant, especially if you look at the, especially if you look at that, that's flat-out wetlands, the whole thing, but, you know, I, if you guys.
Considerably since we were young, and.
They'll never have the, the street there, it'll never happen in a million years, you'd go against the federal government at that point, but anyway, if you still wanna charge me some money, should reduce it, for one, understanding what I've been through as a 69-year-old person, we're building a lot of homes in this house, and how much things change, but also at least let me deferred, at least till I get my occupancy, so that I can get the loan to pay you for that last little bit. Right now, I'm right at the end, where I won't even get the money to finish the house, so there I am, just a house that's not quite finished, but I paid the city, and one other thing, one other thing, since when do you issue a building permit, but you don't give people water? That, that water, they, all they would do is put the water meter in, months ago, there was water on both sides, we paying Brian, Brian Majors to come and get it all hooked up, all they had to do is put the water meter in, but no, they says, oh, that's on you, because you didn't figure out the calculations of the culver, you didn't have, you use recycled rock on the road, things that we could correct, things that should not have stopped this project. So anyway, I guess I've, go ahead and ask me some questions now, I've kinda laid my spiel out.
For the record, I have had ex parte conversations with Mr. Bergerson and Chuck, and I've visited the property, so I just wanna make that transparent. But I, I would just like some clarification on the $9,000, because being at the property, that does seem like a lot of frontage and a steep cost, and I know that there's the calculator, but I guess I'm having trouble understanding, the property, when you go onto it, it narrows down, and there's no, it's like mostly a driveway, I would imagine, so I don't understand how the $9,000 is calculated with, when you think about the property.
There's 200 feet, because it's an 80-foot right-of-way, so they add that, even though the street, this street ends, Gardenia ends, and so it's 80-foot wide, so they're counting that 80 feet, plus 110 feet of my driveway, so then it ends up to 200 feet of driveway. I don't know, I've never seen a sidewalk at the very end of this, when a street ends, but that, you know, that's, that's 80 more feet than I think they should have charged me for, but.
Were you looking for staff to answer that?
I was.
So that is, I believe some of that may be in right-of-way, that is the calculation, so it is not on the private property, it is out in the right-of-way, the calculation. So the linear feet is based on where sidewalks should be, so that is, it isn't, like it's way deep into his property or anything like that. So it is the, they are taking the exact calculations they would for any other property, it is the frontage that they look at.
I sold the first lot, so that doesn't, the first lot went to the neighbor, because he, there's no access to that property, if we had a 25-foot easement, but it was mostly in wetlands, so he gave me more, so I said, I'll sell you that lot cheap, if you'll give me access, or I wouldn't have got access, so we had Andy Mendenhall re-survey everything there, and I had to go around, it's either that or a bridge, and if it's a bridge, you can't, you know, it was unaffordable. But no, you can, I talked to Brian the other day, you, if I could bring the map up, I'm not tech enough to bring it up, but you could see that they, they only, they went from my property, where I sold the lot to the first guy, right along the side, and then they did the end, which ends up being 200 feet, but, so it is, the right-of-way part, I've had to, you know, abide by all the sewer water distances and.
So Commission, that this calculation is based on the, the lot currently under discussion, because I did ask staff, if, if he were to develop further, would this include all of that, and it, it doesn't, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So his concerns with the information he got from the city early on.
So there was a pre-app meeting, and it was disclosed in that meeting regarding sidewalk in lieu of, but there was not a fee calculated at that time, because we had no civil design or development in that pre-app. Usually that conversation is the concept, it does not lay out the full design, so you cannot calculate something that does not exist yet. There are, you know, the, the code is online, you can look up as far as how we calculate the sidewalk in lieu of fee, but no, there was no actual dollar amount disclosed at the pre-app meeting, it never is, because it, the project does not exist yet.
And if I get this right, there's not gonna be a sidewalk put in?
There is not, it, this is in lieu of, that is correct, and that is what we do across the city, that is city code, you know, if you were to change that, you would have to change your city code, because it does say, if you are not, if it has been decided and determined by staff not to put in a sidewalk, there is a sidewalk in lieu of fee in place of that.
So there's not an option, when I came back and said, well, why can't I put a sidewalk, at least that way it goes towards my own? So we, I can't put a sidewalk on my own, isn't that, is that an option?
That was the determination by staff not to at that time, yeah.
So I don't even have an option to put. Oh, there's a lot, but you guys are, it's getting late, but.
Oh, we just wanna talk, I, I mean, we need to make the determination on the specifically on the hardship.
Okay.
It is a lot of issues here.
Yeah.
And I think those things will definitely be talked about, probably conversations that we can have at. But specifically on this high, about the nine thousand dollars and.
Nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Yeah. I've already spent thirty something thousand. I'm, I mean, it's like, you gotta be kidding me.
I understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Well, I mean, I, I would request, and you, it's up to you guys, obviously, that at least I could get occupancy, then I'll pay it. I'll write a promissory note. I'll pay it, but I need to get occupancy. Otherwise, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna have a house that's unfinished and I can't get occupancy. But I paid city warranty, but I have a building permit and still don't have water. You know what it's like cleaning up concrete tools and stuff with no water and find a mud puddle? I mean, it's ridiculous. I don't even see how that's legal.
Okay.
Discussion for the commission now.
Sure. No, no, it's on your hands. I, I could lay out stuff and bore you to death.
Let us have a conversation now. You may, you know what you want, which is a hardship.
Sure.
Either reduce, crack the hard rock.
Yeah, no.
Try to reduce.
Or, or put it after you get off.
Yes, yes, do that. Do, help me out. Yeah, that's where I'll leave it. Am I done then? Thank you, by the way.
Understand it. We understand also where you're coming from.
Okay, I know, and I don't know what legally who can do. I know if he says he's gonna pay it. I would stand behind him because he would pay it. I don't know if we can do it later, but.
Unfortunately, that sets a precedent where every other builder would ask for the same thing. And that would create a tracking mechanism. We do not have, and we do not have staff time for. Um, so you're, you're basically saying then all builders would defer occupancy first, followed by sidewalk in lieu of payments. And if you allow that for one, you should allow that for all. And so then the problem becomes who's, who's tracking that? Well, the problem is if you go to liens. Staff then have to pay, spend quite a bit of time putting a lien. So I, you know, I did look into that as far as, well, that, what is the process? I had the conversation with our finance director and she said, we currently have no staff to track that. Um, and, and you know, we're talking about one person, but unfortunately, when you talk about one person, you have to open it up to everybody. And so the concern is the precedent you now set where nobody else has gotten this before this. So if you say, well, Mr. Bergerson can have occupancy first, followed by payment of the lien. There is no reason other people would pay that. Um, the sidewalk in lieu of, and it would probably go to liens with other people, unfortunately. So then staff have to go after those liens. Um, so it does create more of a burden on the city. Because now we have these unpaid payments and you're building a new home. So keep in mind, when you put a lien on that, it's not until it sells that you recapture that lien. So if it's a brand new home, most of those probably will not change hands for another ten, twenty, thirty years.
I have a question for Robin.
Did you want him to come back up?
I'll go, if you, you come back up so it's on there. The only way I see we could do this is for you to have a private loan from like a family member. I did that with my sons on their houses and they paid me back within the year.
Well, that's what's happening right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
But we got, we're not a rich family. I haven't got unlimited funds trying to finish the house first. But I, but no.
I, I would like to do it differently, but with the circumstances we have. I think that's probably the only option that we, that you would have. To float it for, uh, with a family member.
Hey, could you answer me one more question?
Yeah.
If you have a building permit, why don't you have water? Do you really expect people to build a house without water? I want, I would like to hear the answer.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
I, I don't think that's a conversation at hand unless you would like to me to address that. That is in your memo before you, in your timeline. Would you like me to address that? Uh, so Mr. Bergerson asked for a building permit. Um, he actually begged for it and he told the building department that he would have his design submitted and approved within one to two months. And so the building, um, department did approve that permit. However, unfortunately, we did not get the engineering designs approved for the sewer and water. So we were unable to provide that connection in the timely manner. So there was a, a breakdown unfortunately between the engineer that he had hired and the city. As far as his engineers submitting the plans that we could approve. And so unfortunately, he did have a timeline of. Um, a building permit without water to the building.
I would like to have you address what you.
And I would say that's really not the conversation, I don't believe, tonight. And that might be something to, to ta, you know, not table. But to wait for those conversations you plan to have with the builders.
I added that to the, I mainly wanted to come talk about the, about the problems. That's mainly why I came. I added that because she told me that, she asked me to. Yeah. And it's real.
And I don't doubt that certain least, believe, believe me. And I don't doubt that you, that there's, there's not an issue with how the building, you know.
But why do they restrict my wa, water when I have a building permit?
That is not before us to date. That's the problem. Because we have, have to, we put it on our agenda. Everybody understands specifically on our agenda, you'll be allowed to come forward to tonight. Because we didn't get this to have power. Was that we wanted to talk about the hardships. You'd have an opportunity to have your say about the hardships. Because we wanted you to, wanna make sure that that, and hopefully it can move you forward.
I don't know. Again, we're, we're in a building situation where timeline, long timelines gone by. It's a very complicated one where there's a lot of. It sounded like he said he had a paper that said he could build three homes at one point, but then you said that was only verbal. You have that paper, you have that paper that says you can build three homes from the city? I would think that would be a pretty important paper to have if you were coming in here and telling us you have that, cause I, I don't see it in my notes, but. Okay. And they told you you could do that, but then they said, no, we didn't say that. But you have that on paper? Yeah, I, at any rate, we were talking about the, there's a lot of stuff that's been brought up. We can't solve that in one night. Um, I wouldn't mind taking another. Pause until the next meeting to review this again, to give us some time to digest what's been. Told us here at the last hour, you know, the ninth hour. But he needs to get his water on too.
Yeah.
So that's important.
Is about the problems you have with all the other things.
Yeah.
Happen specifically. About hardship. And that's what we, what we put on the agenda. I mean, as much as I, I think we regret it, we can sit down and figure it, it's, we're not going to. The only thing that we've committed to tonight is it's an issue that's gonna have to move forward.
Because of what the city manager says, the codes and everything, I don't know that there's anything we can do.
But we can do anything, you know, if they made, if this staff finds it very difficult. Doesn't mean we can't do it, but, and I'm not saying that we should. I'm just saying, you know, there are.
Um, I have an additional question. So if, what other um, bottlenecks are there currently to get you in your house? So there's this sidewalk in lieu of fee, but what, what else do we need to do to get that house finished? Cause it's been over a year? Okay, so there's multiple, multiple situations that need to be resolved in order to be in the house.
So Commissioner Slosio, conditions of approval. He has to pay a sidewalk in lieu of fee. He has to set up a utility account. Um, so he has been given basically, here is what you need to do to get your water turned on, to get your sewer connected. Here is your list. He was just recently given this last week.
Okay.
Um, so as far as bottleneck, the only bottleneck is for him to pay his fees, to go through the process to get connected, to, to do the tests and everything that's required.
It's very diff. It's very difficult for me because I know, and I've been around the family and they're about words and stuff. And I know we live in legalistic stuff nowadays, but it's a sad time when we can't work something out. Who, someone's been a member of our city and doing a lot of good things for our city. And we're only talking nine thousand dollars and it's, well, technically we can't do this because you gotta do this first. And if we don't do this, it's for this people. It's, it's to me is legally, you're right, you know, that, that's what we should do. But for me on morally, it's not. Should be been over, but I'm gonna go with, I will go with the legal because that's what I have to do, but I don't agree with it. I just find it, there gotta be a way we can find something. But.
I agree with you, Tom. I think there's a two-way sword here. I think that this is a matter of, of, we need to do what's right. But we also have to worry about what happens next.
Right.
And you know, you worry about, you know, Nurse Bergerson being able to finish his home. He's put a lot of work to get it in his home. Keeps it right at that edge. Things have cost more than, you know, things have cost more than God America over the last few years. Things just keep going up. And I understand, sir, I truly do. Uh, like, concern is, is that if we move that needle in such a way that we say. We'll make this exception. We've opened a floodgate for everybody else. You're an honorable person. The next person that comes says, I saw you gave him an exemption. I want my exemption too. And they're not honorable. What happens to us then? But if.
That's an ordinance that you don't have. You can't do this on a chance, please.
I think if we're cleaning up the process though too, hopefully we wouldn't run into this issue in the future. So hopefully, my goal is that this would be the last situation that this community ever faces like this. And then moving forward, there's more transparency, quicker turnaround times. You know, we get things a little bit easier for people to navigate so that we don't have situations like this.
I totally agree with that. That's why I believe the task force is so there and important. And why, when I ran through office, one of the things I said that my prime priority is the fact that. We have a problem with construction in this community, a problem that is so vast that it literally. Uh, has chased people away. Is it from today? I don't think it's from, I think we have a history. Of letting things happen in this community that, you know.
Come back.
And we need to fix those things. And I think that's where we are today. So Mr. Bergerson today, he may be the last person that has to deal with this. Mr. Bergerson still has ninety-seven hundred and twenty dollars. He's gotta figure out where he's gonna get that to finish what he does. But how do we do that and help Mr. Bergerson? And at the same time. Not set a precedent, it's just so monumental that people who come after him, you know, are sitting there saying. No, uh, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, uh, I know what the city manager would tell me is probably the right thing to do. And it's up to the four of us to sort of decide. Staff is saying that we don't have the manpower. We don't have the ability. Uh, and I understand if you put a lien on the property and a lien on the property. Uh, is not good until it's either paid off or property sold. Just think we, it's a very, very fine line between what is right and what is true. So I can't sign a law. I'm sort of, you know, where, where, where. So I would say you're soon gonna have a law. So it's really the now that you know, the four of us have gotta make a decision.
I, I have one more question.
I, I, are you done with this? Are you to the point of no more questions? Or would you like to do more questions, Mayor Protem?
Uh, Robin, how, if you got the, the occupancy, how much time? If, let's say I gave you the ten thousand dollars, how much time would it be before you get it back?
I'm guessing two and a half, three months. Right now, she's off.
Okay. I, I could give you half of it.
That's a, that's, I'm sorry, that's a side conversation if you're talking about personal loans on the dais, just a point of order. Uh, Mayor Protem, if you are looking for a little direction from staff on whether a deferment to occupancy versus a waiver of fees. Quite honestly, looking at staff time, I would honestly recommend more of a waiver from the commission if that's what you're leaning toward versus a, a deferment. Because um, if you wanna reduce fees, that's not gonna put a hardship on staff versus. I, and I, that still sets a precedent that I'm reluctant to, but you do have that power um, from the dais, so. That is your decision. I mean, if you wanted to do a two-thirds or a half, you know. If you're saying this truly is a hardship and you feel it is, and you're saying, well, in order to get this going. But just keep in mind, other builders will come forward and also ask for hardships and deferment or reduction of sidewalk in lieu of fee. So you are setting a precedent going forward.
I'd be willing to go half.
Agreed.
Fight the, fight the next guy that comes along.
I agree with that. I have a motion.
I so moved that we reduce it to half.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? By a diapath, all payers, say aye.
We'll see what kinda stuff we get in the future.
And Mayor Protem, you have one last item on your agenda?
This is a letter that you all seen this?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Love this report, the salvage chief, and ask me to, um. Does everybody have a chance to base?
Yeah, I looked over yours. I looked over yours when I was sitting there.
Does everybody have a chance?
Yeah, I just have some clarifying questions. So the ship would be parked at, in the Astoria port?
Yeah, this is a private entity. Um, they are requesting support, I believe, at the legislative level. They have approached this several times over the years with the legislation. I believe their intent is to park it in Astoria on the east side of the Meglar Bridge. And they, they have touted this as in case of emergency, they would be kind of like a emergency ship. Or emergency activation center. Um, so they are asking for a significant amount of money from legislation. To, I think, do an emergency management style. I, they have tried several ti, oh, times over the years for this money, I believe.
But it's a private entity, so would the public have access? Like, what would that look like if there was an emergency?
They would write an agreement, I think, with the Army Corps of Civil Engineers. And I think maybe with OEM, which is Organ Emergency Management, to have some kind of intergovernmental agreements in case of emergency. Um, as a ship, you know, it depend on access, you know. So obviously, if the Meglar was down, they may not be able to ge, get over here.
Yeah.
Um, so the question is whether, you know, if they're stationed in Astoria, would they be able to access an emergencies here? Um, that the agreements they've mentioned were not directly with Warrenton, just so we're clear. Um, but they are asking for support, so. I am, I'm not clear on this one, where the money is coming from. I have not studied up on this, I'll be honest. I believe from what the description is, it's most likely from emergency management, which we currently are not seeking those dollars. Yes.
The thing about a ship is the fact that it can't live. Three thousand gallons a day of drinking water, fresh water. It's like, I mean. You think about cascade, you're right, and we talk about it a thousand times, even when it, and it does happen. Um, we're gonna be cut off the ability to have additional services. Do I have a motion to?
I think we should support the salvage chief as a. I think we should support the salvage chief as a, as a, yeah.
I said.
We have a motion to, uh, to, uh, support the, uh, the letter for the city of Astoria, uh, podar, all the favors say aye.
Aye. And, and I'm sorry, just a point of clarification, would you like a separate letter endorsing or just, um, show of support that you support the letter from Astoria?
Yeah.
There's letter. Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
Yeah.
It's a three million dollar.
Yeah.
Nothing for me tonight.
Nothing.
Nothing for me.